On the fact you made a decision, the roll call members please.
Mr. Jeter, District One.
Here.
Mr. Tipton, District Two.
Here.
Mr. Herron, District Three. Mr. Bricky, District Four.
Here.
Mr. Mann, District Five.
Here.
Ms. Hood, District Six.
Here.
Ms. Addington at large.
Mr. Herron be about thirty minutes late getting here, so with that we do have a forum. The next items to approve the agenda, do we need to amend it, Ms. Thomas?
Yes, we need to add two items. The first one would be out of 9B, Deppville Days fireworks permit. And also add 9C, G A S B ninety-six threshold. And those are the only two changes that I have.
What was the second one?
G A S B, G A S B ninety-six thresholders.
And what number was that?
Just 9C.
9C.
All right. With that, we do most approve the agenda as a matter. Do we have a motion?
So move, Ms. Trump.
Mr. Tipton made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll say it.
Mr. Jeter's second. Any discussion? All fair and proper, say an aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Next item is approve the minutes from July the twelfth, two thousand twenty-three. If you had a chance to look at the minutes, if you have any motion to approve the minutes, please.
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes.
Mr. Bricky made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Tipton's second. Any discussion? All fair and proper, say an aye. Aye, opposed.
I'll abstain.
Okay.
Since I went here.
All righty. Next item is citizen expression period, and I'll read this statement, and we'll get right into that. Citizen expression period is upon the meeting when anyone who wishes to address the board staff may do so. If you wish to speak, please come to the podium and state your name, where you're from, and the county, and/or what organization you represent. The board may or may not respond to anything you say, but we will take everything you say into account when making future decisions. Please keep your comments precise and businesslike. If no one has signed up to speak, have them start.
Yes, Ms. Tice.
Okay. We have no particular order, just that we ask that you take time to speak your business. Any action will be considered actively closed as expression. With that, Ms. Peggy, please.
Morning.
Good morning.
We're back. And I see VDOTs here.
They are.
So... I want to thank Freda for getting back with me, and then Jeff called me back about, I'm Peggy Tice from Snowflake Road. I know, you all know that, but maybe everybody don't.
That's okay.
And same old complaint. The potholes are deeper. Speed bumps are rougher. Ditches worse, and since the rain, I mean, it's bad, and the bushes are still growing. But the good Lord helped us with the dust for a little while. And like I say, Jeff did get back with me, and he said that he's covered up. He's got two people retired, two on temporary dis- uh, dispelting. And he needs, well, he's not got no workers. I mean, he's four minus four, the way he talks. And he said he would get to us, but he's covered up this week, would probably be in the future. And... And I would ask VDOT, who cut out? Who's responsible for cutting out Nicholsville and the Gate City VDOTs? I know all we hear, you know, no money. Ain't no money. Well, apparently we ain't never had nothing, ain't never getting nothing for the secondary roads. And our vehicles cost, well, y'all know what the cost of vehicles are. And then too, with schools starting up, I would really hate to be the bus driver on Snowflake Road or any of the dirt roads in Scott County. But I would like to have any help that you all could give us. And I know VDOT will, they need help. VDOT needs money, needs help. And we'd have more support, my sister's here, but people has to work, and they can't be here at eight-thirty. So any help that y'all can give us on Snowflake Road or any of the dirt roads in Scott County. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Good to see you. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Good morning.
Good morning.
I hear you there.
Pretty good. How are you?
All right.
I have something to show you.
I'm Claude Cox from Pattonfield area, other end of the county. Well, we have a truck problem with a tree that we can't get it tuck down. A tree limb is hanging over the roadway. I've been to VDOT Mr. Hensley, where we have a do not, or do nothing. We have a do nothing sheriff and a do nothing VDOT taking care of this problem. This problem went on last year, this tree. And everybody in Scott County let school bus go underneath this tree for a whole year last year. And here it is again, another year. I complained, friends and neighbors complained about this tree last year. They complained so many times that they've lost interest in this. Still, the tree limb's hanging there. We have a deputy, we have a state trooper that rides underneath this tree limb hanging up. This tree limb is three foot, or three inches by six inches, ten foot high. A ten-foot length hanging over the roadway. I've asked for a one-way road to it. But sheriff says it costs too much money. And he can't afford a deputy to stop traffic here. He's not worried about people's lives. He don't care. VDOT don't care. It's too much money for him to take him and post a deputy there to block traffic. But like I said, they don't care.
What road is that on? I'm trying to see.
Six oh four Blackwater Road, Pattonfield. Address is there.
Well, VDOT's here, we'll get them to address this. That's the first time.
Addressing don't do nothing. They've addressed old Danny over and over and over. So I am seventy-five years of age and poor health. If VDOT will furnish a bucket truck, I'll take down this limb. Since I went to Mr. Hensley and told him that that this tree needs to be taken care of, this limb needs to be taken care of, but to no avail. But I will take this tree limb down if he'll furnish a bucket tree. But he'll come here for the budget, and if you buy him another toy, he can park up there in his shop so he can look at it.
We'll look at it, we'll see what we can do, okay?
Okay.
Thank you for coming. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Sheriff Eads. Today I just want to give you some stats from April first through June thirtieth of this year. The sheriff's office reports the following activities for the three-month period of April first through June thirtieth. Dispatch received seventeen thousand three hundred sixty-six calls. And of those calls, we received two thousand seven hundred seventy-six were dispatched to the sheriff's office. Domestic calls and protective orders was fifty-seven for this three months. Criminal papers served this period was nine hundred forty-seven, with six hundred fifty-three being felonies and two hundred eighty-eight misdemeanors. With a hundred thirteen drug charges, seven DUI-related arrests. Officers issued two hundred thirty-eight traffic summonses and was dispatched to seventy-six motor vehicle accidents. Civil process for this period was one thousand forty-seven papers served. There was four hundred and ten incident-based reports, with eighty-five of those closed arrests. Sheriff's office provided six hundred fifty-one hours of courtroom security for three courtrooms. Also, the sheriff's office conducted thirty-three checkpoints. The sheriff's office had ninety-eight out-of-state extraditions involving two hundred twenty-eight hours, travel nine thousand four miles. Were traveled for out-of-state extradition. Provided fourteen in-state transports. Also, we processed a hundred and eighty gun permits during that timeframe, the three months. And also processed thirty-five fingerprint applications. And we also unlocked sixty-two vehicles, which is amazing to me. But that's all I have. Y'all have any questions that I can maybe help answer?
Is that about typical for a three-month period?
I just started doing it this three months. It's sort of similar, I guess. I don't remember what the last was for the unlocked vehicles, but it was probably a little less. I just highlighted in yellow.
I'm surprised that didn't people.
I didn't realize that myself, because I said, you know, you look at it monthly, you don't have to. But sixty-two in the three months is.
So you did that from green? I paid people to do that.
We can't get all vehicles, but you know, some of the year ones.
Just one time, one time.
Oh, we've all.
In Scott County at the gas station in River City. But I paid somebody to do it. It's good to know. I'll call you next time.
We'll try to do it. If it's a newer car, it's someone more difficult, you don't want to damage anything.
I hope you don't run into this. I saw on national news this morning. A guy had an electric car, he quit, and he couldn't open the doors, he couldn't do, open the window, he couldn't do anything. He couldn't even open the glove box, they said. He was in there about thirty minutes, and you know how the heat is, it was that way of summer, so that's another reason.
That's scary.
Carry a hammer and break one. All right. Any questions for the sheriff?
Thank you.
Appreciate you coming. Anyone else wishing to speak? Anyone? If not, we'll close citizen expression period, and Ms. Tice, we will hopefully get something done on Snowflake Road. You're here every month, really appreciate you coming, and so the folks here are listening to you, so. But the roads are, you know, they're just typical, I guess, as to what this time of year the dust and everything too. So hopefully, they will, you know, we'll get to that, you know, sooner or later. All right. Mr. Cox, you still here? You know, like I said, they're here, we'll get them to address this here in a few minutes. And you can tell them where the exact location of that tree is. So maybe we can get it taken care of, and they're here, and they heard what you said, so anyway, we'll see what can happen with that. Any other comments or questions from anyone here on the board, anyone? All right, with that, next item is soil and water update, so. You can have a report, please.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name's Matthew Wood, and I'm the conservation specialist for the Scott County Soil and Water. We just wanted to give you an annual update as to kind of what we've been into the last year or so. We got, there we go. I guess everybody can see that. If you don't know where our office is, it's beside Food Line in the USDA building. Here's just a little brief history about our organization. I'm going to let Isaac Stanley take over.
My name's Isaac Stanley, and I'm the Erosion and Sediment Control combined administrator for the county. So we work with, we have very, a lot of value partnerships, organizations that we work with, such as the Virginia Department of Conservation and Recreation, Scott County Board of Supervisors, Farm Service Agency, Virginia Cooperative Extension, and many others. And we offer many programs and initiatives. We do an annual Kids in the Creek Day, Conservation Technical Assistance, Cost Share Program, and many others. This was pictures from this year's Kids in the Creek Day. Students from Rycob High School this year, and we had approximately one hundred and twenty-five participants. And this is just an environmental education day that we, along with our partners, put on for the students. The Erosion and Sediment Control Program, of course, it's in place to regulate active construction sites so that erosion will be mitigated and sediment remain on site. Any project with land disturbance of more than ten thousand square foot has to be permitted. And if it's residential, it is going to be in agreement in lieu of a plan. If it's not residential, it requires a set of engineered plans to be reviewed and approved by us. There are some exemptions to this, jobs less than ten thousand square feet, mining jobs and agricultural jobs. And agricultural does include logging jobs. And then, of course, each active project site must be inspected every two weeks to make sure they're in compliance with the nineteen minimum standards in Virginia State law. Here's just a few pictures from some active sites in Scott County that I took this past year. We see on the left, we've got some good ENS controls up. We have a sealed fence there that's properly installed, it's trenched in the ground four inches. We also have a, the ditch line is lined with rip wrap to slow down the water and reduce erosion. And then we also have some permanent seeding and mulching for stabilization. And on the right side, it's some more ENS measures. We got some seed madding that is stabilizing a very steep slope. Here was a critical erosion area that I ran into here a few months ago. This was on a waterline job. As you can see, they're just letting the mud run into the creek. The seal fence there is not doing any good because it's not in the ground. So I met on site with engineers and the job supervisor, and we came up with a solution to fix this. And within a day or two, this is what it looked like they had to stabilize. So that's just a few of the ENS things that's been going on in the county this past year. Of course, there's many more, but I just wanted to highlight a few. And I'll turn it back over to Matt.
Okay. Another big thing that we do is we provide cost share to landowners that have livestock. The state is wanting all the water fenced out from any livestock. So with doing that, we provide the cost share to the landowners. On the left is an example of a water trough. On the right is an example of a string crossing where farmers can move their cattle through the stream without causing excess erosion. Here's some more examples. I like pictures myself, so we throw a few pictures in. Just some pipeline we've been installed, and there's a pressure tank to get the water to these type of water troughs. Various brands, different scenarios. Also, another big program we started about four years ago for the citizens in Scott County and neighboring counties is a rental program. We have two no-till drills available and a lime sprayer. This has been really beneficial to the county. We purchased these straight out from the district. One drill, we were able to get a grant to pay half of, but you know, those are thirty thousand dollar machines. We charge ten dollars an acre for the drills and sixty dollars a day for the lime sprayer, and that's open to the public. Anybody can use that. Fall and springtime is very popular, keeps me and Isaac very busy. Here... Here's some highlights. Everybody likes numbers. On the right is the numbers, but the main one, with all the programs combined, the district contributed eight hundred and twenty-six thousand seven hundred and twenty-six dollars to the Scott County's economy this past year. The VAX program, the cost share program, we had twenty-three contracts. There's the total. We got a corrupt program that's kind of partnering with federal programs. As you can see, the equipment rental program brought in ten thousand. And the erosion sediment that Isaac's in charge of is almost three thousand in permit fees. And that's just mission statement. That's all we have, unless you guys have some questions.
Any questions, comments? I have one quick question, has nothing to do with this, what you're doing, probably not even, you're also very concerned. Is all the mollys are growing if we burn out? Is there anything at all? I mean, it's taken over any pasture lamp, it's not mowed, let care of it, they're coming. I have never seen nothing like it. Anything y'all want to come up with that to try to slow them down?
No, no. I mean, I think dirt will speak to it, but if you disturb them, you just make them mad. Really. I mean, like if you cut them down, it seems like there's a hundred times to its funeral. But spraying just sets them back. I don't know, I don't have an answer for that. We're constantly battling with that, it's, you know, controversial.
Is that fair?
That's fair.
Is that fair?
I sprayed three times with helicopter, and then now I've rubbed them, and then I'm going to have to go back and spray again.
There you go.
They're trying to get a drone to come in here and spray. I don't know where it's going to make it or not. Have you heard about it?
Yeah.
I hope it comes, because the drone can probably get a lot of places to spray that the helicopter can't. But they are hard to handle, they're hard to.
Very hard. I mean, I've heard some guys use like the basal treatment, go in there and, you know, certain herbicides and diesel fuel, and you got a paint wrap like top foot above the ground. Who's got the time and the labor to do that? Big factories, I don't have an answer for that.
I tried to get to a cemetery, I could crawl under them, I could. There's thorns on them too, so I dare not, they can't get through them. I mean, just they're, your tires on tractors and stuff, you try to bush hog them, I'd say would destroy your tires.
Yeah, they got millions, you know, millions of little birds down there.
You know where they came from, don't you?
Where?
Stripped them. They put them on there, it was a government thing, and it's just like the Kudzu and a few other things. They bring in, supposed to be good, and it ends up being nothing but a, you know, a pain and, you know, work.
Out of control.
So, and the birds eat them, guess what they do when they crop them, you know, if there's another one, we'll grow them. It's just unbelievable how bad they've gotten on them.
That's it. Yep.
So anyway, don't bring these foreign things in, because we don't, it's not native.
That's right. I'm all too.
It's all like the Kudzu, like I said, the Kudzu way. All right.
Did y'all get a lot of money this year for your program, Matt?
Yeah, yeah, we did. Yeah. We're constantly taking sign-ups. Our new year just started in July, I guess I should have stated that. If you have flowing water on your property, and you have livestock that's drinking out of it, you qualify. And of course, you have to compete, it's a ranking system. So, but it's, we're paying a hundred percent to get these people to do this, so.
Well, that's feed barns. Do we do any feed barns, or they use the most of it as water?
Most of it's used on water. Water is the priority, but if we have any leftover, we can do feed barns. Right now, we've got so many people signed up. It's a lot. We've got a tremendous need already past what our allocation's going to be for the year already. So, big demand for it. Side note, we are going to give away fishing tackle. Probably at the end of August, we're going to put it in the newspaper, on our Facebook page. In the past, we've done tree giveaways, food plots, seed giveaways, just to try to get people that don't even know we exist in our doors, you know, have communication with them. So with two large rivers in the county, our board allocated some money, and we partnered up with some fishing tackle places. And we're going to give the public, first come, first served, pretty good fishing tackle. Can you guys fish, but sprayed water? Any other questions?
Anyone? Did update, appreciate you coming.
Thank you.
All right, next item is Virginia Department of Transportation. The government house here, Alan, y'all come up, please.
Good morning. For those that may not know me, I'm Alan Sumter. I'm the resident engineer for the Virginia Department of Transportation Wise Office. We cover Lee Scott Wise in Dixon County. I gave you a report this morning, handed out for you. I'll kind of touch on some of those items here as we go along. I'll touch on the items that were brought forward during public expression. Start with, as far as Snowflake Road, I think we have come to know the young ladies back here in the back pretty well in the last several months, and we are continuing. We have, what they describe as on their roadway is, you know, things that are common on gravel roads and things that are common throughout the county. So we have, you know, around two hundred and some miles of gravel road here in Scott County. So we kind of try to spread the resources out and try to work on those items that they mentioned on all these roads. But she spoke, she's spoken to Jeff Campbell, area superintendent out of Fort Blackmore. And he does have some plans to come through. And during this time of the year, it's common, you get potholes in the gravel roads. And then you've got to work, try to get rain to be able to work them the way you want to, because otherwise you create a big dust ball that's out there. And so we try to do the balance of that when we can, but he does have plans to work the roads and also put dust control down as well. So that's continued maintenance, but you know, as I said, we've got, you know, some other roadways that we try to spread those resources out and do the same thing on all those. As for Mr. Cox's concern, we do have plans to take care of the tree. I suspect it's going to be sooner rather than later now. I hate that it's taken so long. The resources that we've had available to take down trees such as he describes has been limited due to some contractual issues over the last couple of years. But this tree is very high on the priority list, and I feel like it's going to be taken down within the next few weeks and be eliminated. So those are some of the items that's there. I will mention, as far as the Nicholsville and the Gate City lots that were brought up, those are lots that we use as storage and staging facilities now. We do not have staff there full-time, but we use them. Like as an example, during snow removal, we have salt and stones stored at each one of those that whenever we're in snow, that they go and they work out of. And whenever we work in, say, in the Nicholsville area, and we need to store tobacco or motor grater, then that's where we store it. And then we, our folks like from Fort Blackmore then go take pickup trucks or tans or whatever and travel there, pick up their equipment and materials, and go from there and work out of. The... The closing of those facilities occurred several years ago. And they were part of a study that was done throughout the department statewide about rightsizing resources. And so we currently have staff at Fort Blackmore and at Pattonfield. And those facilities, the employment levels there are around twelve to fourteen people. And currently, we do have some folks that are out on some short-term disability issues and some vacancies, but we're working to fill those, and hopefully some of the people that are out right now will be back pretty soon. And particularly, we're willing to try to get the staff back up in preparation for winter coming back in again. So those are the comments that I would have about things that were brought up here during public comment this morning. So if I can, I'll jump over into our report. So we mentioned the tree they're going to take down. We do have resources that have been allocated back to us from district-wide and also through us that contain some. and also through us that contains some contracts. And so, tree trimming, brush cutting, and that's been a, a big push that we've been working on in the last few months. We've been working particularly with our crews, trying to daylight the, the visibility of some of our signs, particularly speed limit signs, stop signs and those types of things, intersections. We, we mowed the first round of mowing. We've started on the second round of mowing. We're mowing on the primary routes right now. The contractor that we have that mows on the primary is also our secondary contractor mowing here in Scott County. They seem to move along pretty quickly when we get them, you know, get them started. They've made quite a bit of headway just in two days on Route 23 is, is an example. So, we'll, we'll get our primary routes taken care of. We think in the next couple of weeks, we'll have that done and then we'll be moving out on secondary routes. And we've talked with them about the possibility of seeing if they can add some tractors to try to make that go a little bit faster. But those are discussions that are, that are ongoing. The one thing that I'll comment that I will make during, about, you know, during mowing operations that we run into, that we see and this vegetation that's spoken of by Soil Conservation, I was sitting there thinking that at the same time, the, the thing that to me is invasive is the Johnson grass. I don't know how much you all have with it over here and throughout in Scott County, around on farms and everything, but I know in other areas, particularly the area where I live, that it seems like you can cut the Johnson grass and you can have it that high and then in a week, it's back up. And so, it's a very invasive type of grass that it affects our roadways. It causes it to fall in, tunnel in, so to speak, with the sides of the roadways. And it's very hard for us to control it. So, we, we could almost cut some of these roads one week and then a couple of weeks later, they'd be needing cut, cut again because of Johnson grass that's there. Our, I know that typically it seems that we don't mow enough, but we, our statewide policy actually is that we mow secondaries twice a year, but we end up mowing them more than that. And I think that we probably will see three cuttings here at least on our secondaries throughout the four counties that we take care of. But we, I just continue that we will promise you that we will continue to fight and battle the grass on the side of the roads as quickly as we can. And it's, it's our battle this time of the year, kind of like snow is during the wintertime. We also, our crews have been working on pipe replacements. We have a lot of those that are planned and underway this summer and this fall. One of the things that we have just to mention to you with those is that a lot of those, we have time of year restrictions due to the streams. And so, we, we're working to, to get those scheduled and done because in some cases, in particular, some particular locations, we're only limited to a couple of, three weeks a year that we are, because of environmental restrictions, to be able to get those pipes in. So, we will, you know, we'll have to move resources off of what we're doing at the time in order to get those in whenever we have the clearances to be able to do so. Got on here, well, also I just want to mention, I made a note to myself this morning. I've already mentioned a couple of times is that here it is, it's been as hot as it is, but we've already begun our preparations for the winter. We do have an ad out now that's posted for, for vendor signup for snow contractors, trucks, tractors, motor graders. So, I know this, these board meetings are, are filmed and are out there. So, I would just let folks know that if they watch and they interested in signing up to push, push snow for us, there is an ad that's out there on the E-Virginia site that we solicit business on and we'd be interested in talking to you to sign up for snow removal. Mentioned Route 23. We do, we are, we do have land closures that's been ongoing for tree and brush removal and that's going to continue. We also have been doing that on Route 224, which is Waddle Oak Road. And then, as we complete that work, we're going to be moving further on out into the secondaries. One of the things that has affected us some, but we, on our scheduled work, is that I guess it was sometime, wasn't it, around Memorial Day, that there was a big storm that was like touchdown tornado in two or three locations. And so, we've had quite a bit of cleanup that we've had to do with, through our four counties and we've had to, had roads blocked, debris sticking right out on the road. And so, we, we had to use some of the resources that would be part of our routine work in order to get roads opened and cleared. So, we're at the point now that we've about got that, part of that work wrapped up and we're moving back over into our, our scheduled work. So, there, the next thing is on previous requests and comments, there are some things that are there that were that I think some of the staff talked with Mr. Heron about, met with him. There's a drainage issue that was addressed on Ketchum Town Road. And the, we talked before the meeting actually started, Mr. Mann, we are continuing as another one of our battles, battle to try to keep truck traffic off of Route 72 that gets stuck there and, and blocks the roadway for many hours. One thing that I will mention in addition to the signs that we have put up is that we also talked with a gentleman in our central office in Richmond that works with the mapping and he made contact with, I think, Google and Waze and made them aware that we had this issue. And so, trying to get the word out through the mapping GPS industry that that's not a desirable route for traffic. And we do not at V-Doc Control where that the mapping goes through the GPS. In other words, when you've got, using TomTom or Apple Maps or Google Maps or whatever, you pull up a route, it's not V-Doc that's sending you to the route that you're going on. But we, we have been trying to get the word out there and hopefully it will spread that 72 is not a desirable route. And of course, we have some others that are that way as well. So, we, we have flagged some of those routes and we have a, a partnership with the Waze map system that we use particularly out on interstate in order to get messages out. So, they, all those mapping companies seem like they have contact with one another and maybe that's, that there's somebody getting a message not to go on 72 right there. But, but anyway, we're battling it, is what I would say. Hopefully, we'll be able to make a little headway with that issue there. I think the message forward particularly has helped quite a bit.
I can attest to it.
We, we'll try to leave that message forward in place as long as we can, but please realize that's not a permanent fixture there that when we have the need for it in other locations, we will have to pull that and use that in other spots. On the back page, you see there's an update on the rural rustics. We, we're doing some work on those. Some of these is, as well, have the, the time of the year restrictions for being able to take trees down because of endangered species such as the bats and things like that, that we're only allowed to cut trees at certain, certain times of the years. So, that's being scheduled and done within those limitations. We've got some materials ordered for Spurlock Hollow and we got paving going on on Beeline, 701. Jane Hill Circle is complete and then as we move off of Beeline, we'll be hitting into paving the other two that's on there. Finally, the last thing that is on the report that I mentioned is just a little summary of, of the, the work orders that's come in. During the period from April to July, we had 506 work orders that were coming in. 406 of those have been closed. They've been dominated by trees, vegetation, deer, hits and, and grading of gravel roads. As we mentioned earlier, talking some of these other roads, taking care of the maintenance on some of those. So, currently, we've got about 100 work orders that are open that we have work that needs to be done on. Okay? So, there, that's what I have for you to report. I will, I'd like to also acknowledge, you know, when, when it's due, I want to acknowledge Wade Belcher here, my assistant resident administrator. I know like Marshall, you talk to Wade a lot. Some of the rest of you may talk to Wade there, different times there directly to, about maintenance issues. And I want to thank him publicly for the efforts that he puts into trying to get a lot of things done over here and trying to do them as timely as possible. So, there with that, I guess I've ended my sermon. I'll open it up to testimony.
Just like to thank you for the Route 702. I know that one had been a long time project, had been in the mill for a while. That's under your previous request and comments, number two, the Route 702. Also, want to thank you for, I think, earlier this year at the Dollar Store, close to Hilton's, there's actually debris out in the road and you guys came up and did that. You not only did that, you went down to the curb, you know, where the heritage churches and did a cut way up on the bank, which really helped a lot there too. You're welcome. And just a couple of things, I don't know if it's going to be you or him talking about it, but I'd like to know when the Ann Cooper highways project was supposed to start. I thought the pavement was supposed to be done this year.
That's the rural rustic Ann Cooper.
Yeah, that's rural rustic.
Wade, do you know what are...
It's funded. We got two phases on it that got funding this year or so.
The ones that are funded, we expect to start those like this year and then the paving will come in the next year part. Pay, they're actually getting paved. What we're doing those now is we try to do the, the, any type of grading and things of that nature in like the year that's funded, let it lay during the winter and then pave it the, the next spring.
I think you all been up there doing some of that this year. I think I saw where Bush Hogs or whatever had cut trees back, you know, ways trying to make a way for it, is what it appeared like.
Yeah, I think they've been doing some boom acts up in there, Marshall.
Would y'all, did y'all have a report on those roads with you this time that you could give us an update on?
On the ones that are upcoming? Well, that's what I had on the, the back page. Those are the ones that we're working on right now, trying to get finished at. The ones, I'll try to give you an update on the, those others whenever we come back in, I guess, for August, around, try to come back around October or so and give you an update on the ones that are in the current funding, where we are with those. We could try, I can get Wade to talk with you individually about kind of what our plan is on some of the ones that are coming there. But we are, we're kind of in the, these roads now, I can kind of tell you that we're, again, they'll be completed like in two phases. Any of them's there. There'll be the first year of working on construction part of them and then the next year on paving. The ones that are on this list right now are a lot of the ones that are kind of, the ones that are in paving. And then the 619 that's up there, that's, that's a special funded project that's up on Hainaut that's kind of outside really rural rustics. And then I guess the first one that we have that is on our list, that is on there, is Spurlock Hollow Road. So, I guess Ann Cooper, some of them will come after Spurlock Hollow as far as getting started.
So, how are we doing on the, Frida can probably help with this too, on the consolidate, consolidated report that we talked about, you know, earlier in the year from Richmond? We got on road issues and things like that.
Well, the thing that what we had said that we were doing is really at this point is kind of give you the report that I have, but then as far as the work orders and report, this is what we're going to be giving you as far as work orders. The total number that's open, closed and kind of a summary of what we, what type of those have been on. If we were to try to bring you a report that came in of all of those, as example, 506, that individual list every road that's on there, you're talking about a report to be like that, that thick. And I, I mean, we can, whenever we have like individual type of issues that come up, I mean, we can discuss those, but I don't think we can be able to produce a report that's going to bring every single road in like this report every time of what, you know, every work order that's coming in and out.
On 619, it's not under rural rustic. Do you have any idea when that will be started? I got a call from Spearhead Trails, wondering if you're Wade, know anything about when that might be started? I, I know you've got trees marked, but nothing's begun, has it?
No, it's not. It's in the tree, it's part of the, part with bats that, you know, under the restriction and things there, it's done with that. I'll have to get back to you on the ad date, but it's not this year. Who, who is it that's with Spearhead that's...
Eugene McClellan is with Spearhead Trails and he gave me a call, wondering when it would begin.
Okay. If it's okay with you, we'll, we'll, I think we know who that name is, who it is and we'll, we'll reach out to him with an update off of the, the planning. That one's, like I said, it's not rural rustic, but it's got a whole planning stage that's in there and a construction stage that's, other folks are involved with it other than just in our office.
Okay.
So, we'll, we'll do that. Eugene McClellan, correct?
Let me mention to you also, Wade knows about this. First of all, Sarah Circle, down in, down, three years ago, it was almost three fourths covered, three fourths full of cover down there. And I got a call a couple of weeks ago, the people, at that time, you could see the end of the cover. Now, it's grown up and they think it's full now. It's been flooding cross faces and they're afraid if they have another big flood, it could get in the houses down there. That's on Sarah Circle.
Yeah, you mentioned that livestock that we were here and we went and checked it and Wade, do you remember?
I had some guys down there yesterday looking at it and trying to decide what they need to do to work on it, but they were...
And the other thing real quickly, Wade, I talked to you about this too. Last fall was the intersection down here at the red line coming down from Food Line Hill there. And there's no lines on the road at this point whatsoever. You come off Food Line Hill and there's no place, I mean, you could barely see lines and I've had older people tell me that they'll get in the lane that's an incoming lane. And on this side too, people coming from Big Stone will come to incoming lanes into Gate City. It's, it's really dangerous and you told me, I believe, that, that it would take summertime to do it by digging out, put reflectors in and lines. Do you know where that project is?
That type of stuff is handled out of Bristol, so I can touch base with them and see where that's at.
Okay, I appreciate that. And the last thing and I'll hurry with this, we've had a lot of complaints about their colonnade and ice sore down in Moxon Gap. The spot between Gate City and Weber City that VDOT owns and it was a roadside park that's not there anymore. The old picnic tables are there, the trees have fallen on the picnic tables and trash cans have been taken out and it looks horrible through there. And that is VDOT. It's not Gate City or Weber City that I've talked about with them. And it's just considered an ice sore through there.
Okay. We'll get that checked out too.
Thank you.
Okay, one last, I've got a couple of work orders, I can give them to you now or I can do it with Wade afterwards.
That'd be probably if you just get with Wade then, okay? And then we'll, okay.
And I'm going to brag on you about one thing. Over on Big Branch, the bridge you replaced over there, that was the quickest job I've ever seen. It took you longer to put up detour signs than to fix the bridge.
It doesn't go across the other side.
It's great over there now. So that glass did a good job over there, glass construction.
How long on this Johnson grass that you're talking about on the road? Are y'all allowed to spray that?
We get so many limitations on spraying and so much there, the cost and the resource, it'd just be almost impossible for us to do, to spray it.
I know years ago, they'd come through and sprayed some of the rideaways and stuff, but that Johnson grass, a lot of it is where the guardrails is and the mowers can't get it. Only way you can get it is weed eaters.
We, we have procured and obtained a, a new machine going, our tractor, we're kind of getting started with it. It's a very expensive attachment, about $66,000. It's a guardrail mower. It has like two trimmers on each side and it goes right around the guardrail post and most, so we're starting to use some of that some. And we're hoping to get that out to everybody to use in time to be able to do that. It's a kind of, like I said, so expensive machine that we have to share that among some of our headquarters, so we, we're hoping that we can use that some to trim around like some of the guardrail and help some of the oil.
Todd was telling me about that. I believe he said it was tore up right now.
Well, it's, I'm not sure it's tore up, but what, when we got it, we found that there were some, some linkages that needed to be modified on some of our tractors for it to fit. So that's last I heard was part of where we were with that.
I just noticed I was up 71 the other day and Johnson grass at the guardrails, it was, grew up on both sides and fell come over toward the road on that.
And unfortunately, as I mentioned on the secondary, is it's one of the issues we have that being right on the shoulder of the road, it's falling into the road many times.
I just thought if you could possibly spray.
Yeah, we would like to spray it.
Can we take care of it for a while?
I'm a, I'm a big proponent of spraying, but it doesn't align with some of all of our agencies that we have regulating this, one thing, we're kind of limited.
Is there anything that the Board of Supervisors could do about getting you all more help or anything? Anybody we could complain to?
I don't know, I really don't, honestly, I don't, I don't think so. We, I know that our central office, they've been working on some studies, our employment levels through General Assembly and I'm sure that our local members are supportive of trying to get us all the help we can, but there are some studies underway where that they're discussing about possibility of seeing whether it's justified to add more resources and, and that comes with adjusting work plans and seeing what our needs are and everything. So there are a lot of exercises that we're going through that we spend a lot of time in the office working on, providing data. But the, the one thing that I will say is that, as you know, we didn't have hired equipment for a while and we worked on trying to get that back aboard and our mowing contractors, our hired equipment contractors, paving contractors, almost everyone, including us at times, we are running into some of the same challenges that you see like in the restaurant industry and so forth, of trying to find individuals that are able to work for us or them for them. So staffing is an issue that affects us just as you see in some of these things, you see billboards up all the time, you know, need CDL drivers and so, we're kind of the same way contractors are as well. So that's one of the challenges that we've been working on as well. And I know, I guess, I'll say y'all may have other things for me, but I know when I come and I bring a lot of these things out, that it sounds like, okay, I'm talking a lot, well, I can't do this or I can't do that or whatever, and I'm not meaning to sound that way at all. What I'm just trying to do is put in perspective that we're trying to balance all that with what our, our resources are, what our funds are and try to schedule and get all of it done as quick as we can. It would, you know, it's behind the scenes, which we're the behind the scenes, you know, it looks for everyone like it's easy that you just send someone out to cut a tree or you send someone out to do that, but we have a lot of, you know, rules or regulations and government authorities and things over us that we have to work with then, procurement rules and so forth in order to try to accomplish things. So again, I think many of you as members of the board know, and I think you've seen with Wade talking with him, that locally, we are committed to trying to get everything that is brought to us done as quickly as we can and we're finding a way to get it done as quick as, as we can. We'd like to get it done like you all did want us to tomorrow as well, but I promise you that we, we're trying to work on it as soon as we can.
Two real quick things, if you could address, I thought y'all had a machine that earlier, not sure if it was before you came or about the time you came, to clean out the drainage piles, I mean piles?
We, we have a, we use a sewer jet that's with water. We use that at times. And then for ditches that's brought up before, we have a, a machine that we can go, it's V-shaped, we can scoop in the ditch line, pick up, load the trucks and do that. We, we are, we're doing some of that right now. Some of our emphasis is on the tree removal and things that's there with that and some of the pipe replacements. As we go into the fall, then we're going to be shifting into some of the ditching work as well and hopefully even through the winter sun.
So that'll basically reshape the ditches?
The machine, the best way in layman terms that I can describe that, Marshall, if you've ever seen, you know, a pond scoop, is a pond, a fancy pond scoop that attaches to a loader is the type of device that that is. Now, we have to use other things like attach a motor grater or use a motor grater with its attachments to cut the shoulder as we do well, but the, the ditch pro it's called is very effective that that's for us to use and using the pond scoop concept and going down the ditch, picking material up, loading it in a truck and taking it off there with that. And the advantage that we have with doing that that way is that we don't have to pull material out into the roadway like we used to with the machine, come pick the, the ditch materials clean right out in the road and have to use as much equipment to sweep the roadway and so forth with that.
Very good. Please don't forget the gentleman back here.
With the tree?
Yeah, with the tree.
Yeah, we've, we've got that, that's, that's come to us and Sheriff Eads contacted our office and talked with him and he told us the importance of trying to get it done as well and so we are, we're working on getting that done as quickly as we can.
One quick thing, a Forest Service Road, Century Road, are you familiar with, off the High Knob Road, 619, Hills Tower, Big Cherry Lake?
I personally am not, but.
Anyway, it's a Forest Service Road and there was a time when the Forest Service was going to close that road. It's been a few years ago, I haven't been on this board very long. It's a Forest Service Road, there's 72 pieces of property, private owned property on that road and I don't know about the maintenance on it, if it's a Forest Service Road. I'm sure you all don't do that, do you?
No, no, if it's not a, not a route numbered road, then we don't do that.
Well, it goes from High Knob down toward Big Stone, Big Cherry Lake. And anyway, the people contacted me on what direction to go in. I said, well, it's not a VDOT road, but maybe give us some direction on what the feds do and how they do that for maintaining a road like that.
I'm not sure what the, how often they maintain it or whatever. That's be something, just have to contact them and see what they're.
At one time they were going to close it and so I got told at the car salesman's office that they, they put a stop to it, that they're actually going to close that road and it's a 72, there's people lives out there. It's their cabin, but they actually live there. And, but that was their intent and, but anyway, any direction you might could give us on?
Contact and enforce.
That's what I thought, I hope y'all had any kind of deals with them or if you did anything with that. Anything else for Mr. Sump? Good presentation?
One, one, sorry I was late. Didn't mean to come in late on you, but appreciate what you done up at the Bickers Place on 71. He's well pleased with that. It rained hard the other day and it seemed to, seemed to work good. The other place up at the rain, what I call the rain barrel on Long Hill, I actually talked to that guy that owns that the other day, where the water was coming out of the holler and going in the ditch and instead of going down the ditch, it's jumping the road and going in his building. He said that, of course, this, he said used to, the pavement, there was pavement on the shoulder that was angled. And he said back several years ago, that when they scraping the road, it peeled that pavement up. That, I don't know if y'all could do that or not, that's, that's something he wanted me to mention to you, but if, if there's any way to fix that ditch, if you remember that, it comes straight out of that holler and the ditch is full now. I don't know if it was actually that, that full when we looked at it or not, but I seen it the other day and it's full.
I'll look at the issue again. The main problem there is that, that water comes off of private property through a pipe that's elevated about, what would you say, three feet above the road?
I guess so.
And the ditch is two or three feet below that pipe, so it just comes out and shoots straight in the road, but we'll look at it and see if there's anything.
Maybe way I can angle that water, if you put a 90 or something on that to make it go?
Well, with all of those property owners that angled that pipe a little bit.
Toward the ditch, yeah. I don't know how long they've been there, it's untold, but.
From talking to the guys at Fort Blackmore, it's been there for a long time. It's been that way for a very long time.
But if you can come up with something just to keep that water out of this building, I mean, don't do it all the time, but we, these hard rains we've been getting, there's a lot of water that comes out of there and it's, it is jumping the road, I actually saw it coming out in the road and it's not really going. And the ditch is full too. So even if it does go down the ditch, it still comes out in the road right there. I get, Snowflake Road, did you all, did y'all talk about it?
Oh, yes. I feel like I've come for, I mean, I feel like I've done any good, I feel like Snowflake Road's going to be put back. And it's talking about, you know, no money, water conservation, they got money, why can't we get money? And then you're talking about getting justified. Hey, send them out to them roads and they'll be justified.
Well, the big thing that, that I would remind you, what you're after is to get the road paved and we put it on a six-year plan this last time, so.
It'll get paved eventually.
That's, that's the major thing.
But we've been on a six-year plan since 1997.
Okay, thank you ma'am.
Okay.
I think they can do gravel and tar without it being on a six-year plan. Would you, would you like to have that done? Well, I know it's done because there's a recreational road in my district that is tar, has tar and gravel on it and, you know, I thought, there are a lot of roads where people live who would appreciate tar and gravel.
Yeah. And you see, we've got grass growing in the middle of the road, so, I mean, thank you all.
Anything else for Mr. Sump?
I said I still was in July mode, it'll be November whenever I come back next, okay?
That'll be good.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate you coming. Our next item is Mountain Empire Community College, the Promise Program, a MOU that we had, have on our tablet, we have a chance to look at and start if you would.
The MOU that you have on your tablet is for the Promise Program. This is funded with the Regional Improvement Commission funds, $43,000 and that will help pay for 100% tuition for recent graduating students that are residents of Scott County to attend Mountain Empire Community College. So the MOU just spells out the program and what the college and the county will do.
All righty. If you had a chance to look at it, it's, the money's already in the bag, it's been approved, we've got to do this MOU with Mountain Empire Community College, so any discussion? If not, we entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to be approved.
Mr. Prentice made a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Jeter's second, any discussion?
All fair and proper, say an aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next item is item 9B, the fireworks permit for Duffield Days, Mr. Arns.
You have this in your packet. It's the application for a permit to operate a fireworks display during Duffield Days on September 2nd. The location will be the grounds of the Crip Drive Tech Building in Duffield. The EDA will need to approve that location at their August 16th meeting, so your approval today would be contingent upon EDA's approval of the site. It's the same site that's been used for many years. You also have a certificate of liability insurance that's included, a map of where the fireworks location will be and a resume and things of the technician that'll be doing the display.
All right. Did entertain a motion to approve, contingent upon the EDA approval on 16th, do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Miss Hood made a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Haron's second, any discussion?
All fair and proper, say an aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
9C is the CASB 96 threshold, Mr. Arns, if you would go with that.
This is also in your packet. Beginning in fiscal year '23, the Governmental Accounting Standards Board issued GASB 96. Statement 96 provides guidance on the accounting and financial reporting for subscription-based information technology arrangements for government and end users. The Virginia Department of Accounts has established a reporting threshold of $5,000 for short-term subscription-based information arrangements and those that are less than 12 months. So what I'm asking today is for your consideration to also set a threshold of $5,000 for our subscription-based information technology arrangements as well. $5,000 for our subscription-based information technology arrangements as well. And you have more information about what the GAZBIE 96 statement is in detail, if you want to take a minute to go through that. Last year you did something similar on GAZBIE 97, you set that threshold at 10,000 for leases. Since the state has set the threshold at 5,000, that's my recommendation to follow suit with what they're doing on this, as well as Mr. Garcia that does our financial preparation for audit.
All righty. Do we have a motion to approve?
For 5,000, I'll make a motion, Mr. Chair.
All right, Mr. Tipton made a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Jeter, second, any discussion? All fair and proper, say an aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Thank you, ma'am. Next item is item 10, let's say, if you would attain it.
Your first appointment is for the Comprehensive Policy Management Team, private provider. You do not have any applicants for this position.
Do we have any nominations for this Comprehensive Safety Policy Management Team? Do we have any nominations? If not, we continue to kick it down the road, maybe get somebody interested in doing that. And the next one, if you would please.
You received a letter requesting that Michael Carrico be appointed to the Southwest Virginia Alcohol Safety Action Program Policy Board.
And he has served before, he's willing, he's willing to serve again as far as we know?
Yes.
Okay. Any nomination for this, for this policy board, do we have any nominations?
I'll nominate Michael Carrico.
Any other nominations? Not entertain a motion, nomination, decision, vote back, motion, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Jeter made a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Herron, second, any discussion? All fair and proper, say an aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried.
I have a question about the Comprehensive Policy Management Team. Do they, do they have to live in Scott County? Is that a...
I received an email that says that the team shall also include a representative of a private organization or association of providers for children or family services if such organization or association is located within the locality. That's the statement.
Okay, so as long as they work for whoever their organization is, is doing services for Scott County.
That would probably be a lead.
They're, I'm, I'm actually on, on that, that, there, there's two, two or three names that come up, they don't live in Scott County, but they do, whoever they work for, provide services for Scott County. And so that's, that's the, that's the type of person we, we have to have. There was one or two other names that, that come up, so we may need to, that do work for the county.
Are the companies these people work for in Scott County, or they just do services for Scott County?
I don't know where they're based. No, I don't think they're in Scott County.
Okay.
I think one of them might be in Lee County, one of them's in Wise County or something. I don't know.
We can, Ms. Kegler, research that and see.
Well, we're a little bit limited because you have to be, you have to work for, you know, how you can look, you can look at it and see. But there, there, there was one that works, maybe for a Commonwealth attorney that may be able to serve on it.
Okay.
But anyway, that's what I need to look into.
All right, so. The next one is the Appalachian Juvenile Commission, Ms. Darne.
Wayne McLeilan has resigned from this position and Mark Thompson has offered to serve in his place.
Do we have any nominations for this commission?
I'll nominate Mr. Mark Thompson.
All right, any other nominations? If not, motion, nominations, decision, vote back, motion, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Jeter made a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Ricky, second, any discussion? All fair and proper, say an aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Next item is the county attorney out, Ms. Kegler, have anything for us?
I have one request. We often, almost every year, update procurement ordinance with changes. The, my resource, the DGES, is behind in updating those changes. I'm not sure that there's going to be anything this year for my review of it, but just in case, could I have authority to advertise a public hearing for that ordinance if there are changes and that's necessary?
Okay.
So we don't have to wait two months to get it done.
All right. Need a motion to authorize Ms. Kegler to do this, what do you call it?
Public hearing.
Public hearing, right then, thank you.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Mr. Tipton made a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Jeter, second, any discussion? All fair and proper, say an aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Next item is item 12, claims, Ms. Darne.
The claims are in your packet in the green. Early sets for the month totaled 169,870.88. And you have a list of items that are over 5,000. The main one for this month that added to the claims is the regional jail first quarter payment, and that's 603,176.55. Total claims that you'll need to approve total 987,076.75.
All right, any comments or questions for, Ms. Darne?
How much did you say that raised your budget?
It's on the very back page, back in the last page. This looks different, this, excuse me, the system looks different while we've been at Gitz, you got a little...
Yeah, it's a...
Oh, yes, Darryl wasn't here last month.
That's right, you weren't here, we did the change.
I wasn't here, so I didn't get to see it on all this new fancy equipment we've got.
So the report is system-generated instead of Excel-generated, so you get descriptions on what they are for instead of just seeing what we type into Excel.
Do we have the fund balance, do we say?
We don't, we're still operating in two accounting systems, so they're not combined, so it'll be a little bit before we get a treasurer's account building.
All right.
By the way, we're getting money back from the jail this year.
It's in the budget.
Yeah, that's good, though.
Yeah, it's good.
Yeah. That is, do we not remake count in the October glass, are you?
123, I believe is what it was in July.
That's down something, what happened in there?
If we're down system-wide.
We don't, but their cost stays the same though, I mean, as far as their, their cost, they'll probably go up and make, you know...
Yeah, per diem has increased, yeah.
That's the way it works. All right, if I look at, if you have a chance, we need a motion to approve the total claims of 987,076.75, do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
All right. Ms. Hood made a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Tipton, second, any discussion? All fair and proper, say an aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Anything, Ms. Lance?
I don't have anything.
Are we done with comments, requests, and recommendations? Our point of answer, Mr. Brink?
We're not, please.
No, we're not, we've got comments, we get through this, we'll be, we'll be down the bottom, guaranteed. All right, with that, Mr. Jeter, anything that you...
I'd just like to thank the staff and the board for all they do.
Let them stay busy, I know. Mr. Tipton, have anything?
I don't have anything.
Thank you. Mr. Herron, do you have anything?
Sorry I was late, I had some things to do this morning. Appreciate what everybody does. From here on out, I may not be able to be at meetings, but I'm going to stay on board and I'll do everything that I can with B-Dot, seems to be the biggest issue most of the time. One, one thing, if you could pass it on to them, and I should, I, I forgot about it and I shouldn't have because I hid it this morning, there is a pothole on Corn Ridge big enough for a Volkswagen to fall in it. I've already heard about that. And I, I don't know why they've not fixed that, I don't, I mean, it's big.
Wow.
I mean, I hid it, especially where the trade's, it surprised me, it's not busted tires yet, I mean, it's, it's big, if you could pass that on to them. I told them, I think, once, but anyway, appreciate what everybody does. Thank you for the many lessons that I've learned the last three and a half years, so it's been a, been a, overall, a good experience and I appreciate it. I'll...
Appreciate you.
I do.
Mr. Brink?
The only thing I want to mention is that a couple of weeks ago, the J-LAR Commission came out with their preliminary study that they've been working on. And I encourage all of you to look at this because there's suggesting that the composite index be changed on how we fund the school systems in the state. And before you do that, I'd like for you to take a look at the Constitution of Virginia. Article 8 is, is education. Under Section 1, it talks about how we are to educate the students in the Commonwealth of Virginia. You've made reference to this several times. And the other thing to look at is Section 10, that's when two or more states join together in a joint agreement, a reciprocal agreement. Read the Constitution and those two sections and go over the J-LAR thing because it will really change the way everything is, is done, how we figure our local ability to pay.
Is it going to be worse or better?
I don't think our school board will want to approve it. You, they figure more in the population of the county in figuring the com, the composite index. And I don't think they would count population from Sullivan or Kingsport in figure for the composite index. So it would only be based on Scott County. And I don't think our school board or superintendent would want to do that. But this is, this is a state J-LAR commission study, so maybe it'll have some weight.
Back a few years ago, I talked to Douglas Killor in Richmond about this, how they calculate that as far as the composite index. He said the bigger counties would love to see it go away because they're paying so much more, you know, than what we are for student because their, their ability to pay. And he said, you don't, they don't want this to go away, it needs to stay like it is. But if they do the population thing, then they can't count enrollment numbers, so the kids that's coming from out of county, out of state won't get counted, and so it's going to be expensive education, these out-of-state kids.
That's, yes.
Be very expensive. And in 2021, it's 442 coming here from Tennessee. That's one we have addresses on. It was 398, I think, in 2022 on what it was this past year. So you take that away, that formula, I don't know, if it's not based on enrollment, then it won't be good.
The way they figured it out, a county will send in the number of students they have. So we would send in Scott County and out-of-county student numbers, and then they send us money back according to that. But the new way, they'll look at population and students in the county and figure it on that, and so it would really upset the apple cart.
Right out, what, about 25% of our budget goes to the school system, they're about free. So...
There is a chart, and here's a small chart that shows also how much, on the average, comes out of federal government, state government, and local governments. And in federal, it's very small.
Yeah.
The big part is state and then local on the, in the middle.
Mike, what did you say the chapter was, is the Virginia Code, right, or the Virginia Constitution?
Uh, the Constitution is Article 8, and you correct me if I'm wrong, but it's Section 1 and, and Section 10, read those two. The first one deals with that we are obligated to educate students in the state. And Section 10 talks about joint agreements between counties in Virginia and other states, and we do not have a reciprocal agreement with any other state or county outside our, you know, outside our county. And Danny's been arguing one for a long time, and, and you've brought up the other one for a long time, and I appreciate that.
Well, people need to know what they're paying for, and that was, we did, actually did a FOIA request to get the numbers from the school system. We had to do it twice, but the second time we, a little different tactic to get it. And the 603 kids as of 2021, that's coming from out of county, out of state, 442 of the Tennessee. That's what the Tennessee address, not your son, will claim an address of a grandparent, somebody in Scott County, that's not, they live in Tennessee, but you're saying they reside here, and even though they may live with grandparents, that's, that's the one that has a Tennessee address, 442. The 398 last year, this year, it was 80, I don't know, I haven't looked.
A lot of states require, or a lot of school systems in other states, require that when you register your child to attend the school, you have to have proof that you live here, like with a, uh, electrical bill or something that proves that you're a resident of the state. I believe in following the laws, I mean, you know, that's what I've said all along with these out-of-state students, I mean, it's against Virginia Code.
Well, I thought this, and I sort of, just that, you know, if everybody's okay with it, and I just sort of shut up about it because same lot of people, the citizens are, are okay with it until we get their tax taken, then they're not okay with it. So, anyway.
Well, I've told you all along, I've got mixed emotions because these kids that are coming back over here are children of kids that I had that moved away, and now they're sending their kids back, and that, that's a credit to our school system.
It is.
But we're paying for it.
I love our high school, I love our schools here. I live there, I'm always sending my kid here to, because I think our school system is one of the best in the state, and, so they know that, they take advantage of it, but how much can we afford? I don't know, it's just expensive to operate schools and...
The state's still not decided for, will agree on how to handle our budget yet, have they freedom. They're still saying 5%, but we might have to come up with 2% more percent. And I, I don't know where that would come from.
Some of the county, Wise County, they have budget 7%. I just want to tell you the budget, the pounds are 11, if it's going to be 7 instead of 5, so, anyway, we'll have to wait and see on that sort of thing. Anything else, Mr. Brink?
No, that's all.
Anything for you, Ms. Hood?
No, I could say a lot about the school systems in B-Dot, but I won't. So, I, but I do appreciate this board, and I appreciate the county employees, you know, they just all do a great job.
Yeah, me too, I, the board here, I mean, y'all did the work with, and Jerry, we're going to miss you being here, but anyway, we, we got your phone number, we know where you, where you live, so we can, we can, but anyway, we've been a good meeting and we, and I think we worked together on all of this, and it's been a pretty, you know, pretty good session we've had here. All right, anything else before we go, then take a break today? Thought we will adjourn till September 1st?
6th.
September 6th, be back here, so that meeting is adjourned.